Caregivers of people that have been taking care of their friends and family that have had cancer. And we also have a ceremony where we light up bags that are honoring, in honor and in memory of loved ones that have had cancer. So we'd like to invite you all to the event. You don't have to be on a team. You don't have to register as a participant. You can come out. We have food, we have live music, and we have games. It's a lot of fun, a lot of fun, but also very poignant moments honoring people who have cancer. So, does anyone have any questions?
So, what's the plan if it rains? It's not going to, but...
Yes. Likely, we'll be moving to Sports Pavilion as our backup plan. So we'll make a decision by noon on Friday if we have to move inside, so...
Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. I knew that was the plan, but wanted to make sure.
Yes, definitely something we've had to look at recently, so...
Yeah, alright. Thanks for all the good work that you guys do. Hundred and thirty...
Hundred and thirty-three thousand so far.
How much has that gentleman that walks around door-to-door raised?
Yes. Bob Silipini, as of just a couple days ago, has raised on his own $54,000. So he's a big part of why we are the biggest relay in the state of Kansas.
Wow, amazing.
Yes, he is.
Alright. Whereas the American Cancer Society Relay for Life is a life-changing event that gives everyone in more than 5,000 communities across the globe a chance to celebrate the lives of people who have battled cancer, remember loved ones lost, and fight against the disease. And whereas money raised during Relay for Life of Douglas County, Kansas helps support research, education, advocacy, and patient services. And whereas Relay for Life helps fund more than $100 million in cancer research each year. And whereas cancer survivors are honored with a victory lap as they lead the way around the track, followed by teams who keep a representative walking on the track from 7:00 p.m. until 7:00 a.m. because cancer never sleeps. And whereas survivors and those remembered are represented by the thousands of luminaria which line the running track, their candles glowing from dusk throughout the night. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Lawrence, Kansas does hereby proclaim June 7th through the 13th, 2015, as Relay for Life Week in Douglas County and encourage citizens to participate in the American Cancer Society Relay for Life of Douglas County to be held at Free State High School Track on Friday, June 12th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. and ending at 5:00 a.m. on Saturday, June 13th. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I mean, I could keep it, but that's way less fun, so...
Thank you.
The other thing that I wanted to make mention of tonight is we had a former mayor who passed away recently, Nancy Hamblotan, who was mayor in 19...was it '73? Seventy-three to seventy-four. So just wanted to make mention of that. She was, we believe, the first woman mayor of Lawrence. So, pretty special lady, made a huge difference, and our thoughts and prayers are with her family. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And all items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. Discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda, will be considered separately. Is there an item on the Consent Agenda that a member of the commission would like to have removed for separate consideration?
Mayor, I don't want to pull off the trees, item number 11, I think it is. I just wanted to make note of the comments that I made during our study session.
Sure.
About the, you know, the cost as it relates to affordable housing is just one more cost that is passed on to homeowners.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? No? Is there an item on the Consent Agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for separate consideration? Alright, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the addition of 201 claims in the amount of $1,348,978.74.
Mayor, please.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Sodan to approve, second by Commissioner Amick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. City managers report.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Couple items this evening. We did want to report to you that we are placing all of the outside agency requests related to your upcoming budget discussions on the city's website, and we have a spot for those. We're basically placing all of the requests that come in, whether they are related to the social service funding or the alcohol funding. And we'll be discussing those additionally at next week's study session. But we just wanted you to know, we're kind of placing those as they come in on that website, so you have one place to go and take a look at those. Also, we are so proud of our Parks and Rec Department. It has been announced that they are a finalist for the National Gold Medal Award through the National Recreation and Park Association. This was categorized to me like the Super Bowl of the Parks and Recreation profession. So it's very prestigious to be in this category, and of course, we're so proud of what our Parks and Rec staff does and all the services that they deliver to the community. There will be further steps in that process happening in September, where they'll be announcing, I think, the winner. But to be declared a finalist is certainly a great honor. I was also asked, just to highlight for you, the Health Department had requested that I highlight their upcoming reception that you see on your calendar. The Health Department Community Celebration related to their accreditation, that'll be Thursday, June 18th, 5 to 6, in the Community Health Facility, second floor. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Excellent. Any questions for Diane?
Congratulations to our Parks and Recreation Department.
Heck of a job.
Lot of awards.
Pretty big deal, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, anything we could do to help us get the gold? I did read the history of Lawrence, and apparently we got KU because our former postmaster, Josiah Miller, bribed members of the Kansas Legislature with $5 bribes. So if we could make some $5 bribes for this gold medal award, you just let us know, okay?
What is this, FIFA?
That's right. That's right. Alright, now we will take general public comment. So this is items not pertaining to anything on the agenda tonight that we will invite you up for general public comment at this time. Alright, we will move right along into the regular agenda. I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your cellphones as we move on with this. The first item on the regular agenda is to receive a presentation from the Aviation Advisory Board with an update on activities and 2016 projects. Richard, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Richard Hague, the current chairman of the Airport Advisory Board. We do have a few of our board members that were able to make it tonight, so if they want to stand up, recognize some of those guys. Along with also Lloyd Hetrick that runs the FBO for the city out at the airport. And without it, most of our projects and things wouldn't be done without these guys' help, but especially Lloyd and his staff keeping us going. So we have Dan Warren, Lloyd Hetrick, John Becker, and Sherry Thompson with us tonight. So these are part of our board members.
Excellent. Thank you all for your hard work.
We did get our leadership Lawrence flights in and our summer camp in around all the weather that we've had. Didn't have to reschedule any of the flights this year, so that worked out really well. Had just finished up the youth aviation camp this past weekend, and everything went great. We had a thunderstorm roll in just before the camp was starting, and were able to wait it out and get everything in, and worked well. And that's part of the reason I think Parks and Rec has that award, because they worked with us great. City staff was great to help everything go smoothly, along with quite a few volunteers to make the camp a success. We did complete a wildlife hazard study, was required by the FAA in 2014, that did address and identify some wildlife hazards out there at our airport. This was prompted by some animal strikes and accidents involving animals at other airports in the country, and they wanted to step up and make sure these accidents don't happen anywhere else. So the wildlife hazard study did identify some species creating hazards at the airport, and they did recommend at that time that a wildlife security fence be put up around the perimeter of the airport to keep...I think the biggest thing was deer and coyote, but there are a bunch of other animals that have been identified. The biggest shocker was that we have badger out there, and they're not a danger for running into the airport as much as they are digging under the runways and tunneling through. City staff has done a lot to mitigate some of these by eliminating brush and some habitat around the airport. But with that, the step with the FAA was to do an environmental assessment study. What is the impact that the development of the airport has on the environment, as well as future development and this fence project as well? So that study was just completed. We're having a public hearing June 17th for that, to get public comment on what their findings were. A part of that study was an archaeological study to check for artifacts and things in the ground around the airport. Since there's a lot of Native American activity in this area, they wanted to make sure that we weren't building on something we should. And so before they invest money in our airport, we wanted to make sure everything's in good shape there. The biggest portion of this is, in 2016, if the discretionary funds are available with the FAA, we've been identified as one of the projects that they want to fund as far as putting this fence up around the airport. And if that funding does come through, it will be a 90-10 split with the FAA. So the FAA will pay 90% of it, and the city would be responsible for 10% of it. They anticipate with all the security gates and everything to go in, it would be about a $900,000 project. So the city's portion would be about $90,000 for that. And that depends on a lot with the FAA. But if that funding comes available, the discretionary funding, if we don't accept it, goes away, and we may not get that back. Well, part of our grant assurance program for funds that we've received in the past is making sure the airport runs in a safe manner. And if they've identified a safety issue with the wildlife, and we don't act on it, something happens, then it becomes 100% the city's responsibility to mitigate it. So this is an opportunity for us to have the federal government take a good portion of that. And since we are a major portion of the national transportation system, it is, I think, only fair for that to happen that way. So this would be something that may pop up next year should the funding come available. It wouldn't be this year, but it would be in the 2016 FAA. We did just finish up with an emergency management exercise with Douglas County Emergency Management. We had some of the board members participate. We had members from Burton Ash, LMH, Lawrence Police, Lawrence Fire, Sheriff, Highway Patrol. Basically, there was not any procedures in place or planned in place if we ever did have an accident at the airport. If there was never an accident at the airport, it'd just come out, and they'd kind of wing in on what we needed to do. So there was some grant money available through emergency management for a hazmat exercise. So the exercise kind of grew to where we included a 19-passenger aircraft, a semi-containing Jet A being delivered to the airport, and incorporated a lot of entities all at once, including the University of Kansas. Some of the passengers on the airplane were proposed to be KU students, so that we got everybody involved with it. And so everybody from the chaplain corps to counseling agencies to the hospital, to see what procedures we needed to have in place in case a large event happened like this. And this doesn't just hit the airport, but it's anywhere in Douglas County. And so we just wrapped that up, and one of the benefits of that is the different levels of response for incidents. And one of them was when Pet World just had their incident a few weeks ago, a lot of the people that had visited that store were, you know, familiar with the...basically, it was like a petting zoo for most people, and it really hit them hard. They went ahead and activated some of the counseling services on that point, which was brought out right from this exercise. So we'll have the final report coming out, the final, like, kind of a hot wash to go over the policies and procedures, and I'm sure that they'll come through with some very active ones from the city, and it really's been helpful with procedures in that area. So we just finished that up. We do have...the street department is going to work on the West Apron. We did have an airplane damaged from rocks coming up into a propeller over there, and so they're going to rebuild the West Apron, which is where the KU jet has its access, where Life Star is located, where Steve Craig Enterprises is. So it's an active area for local, smaller businesses that use that side of the ramp. So that will be...because that's not on the public side of the ramp, we weren't eligible for FAA funding to match any of the repairs over there. So that's part of the money that you were asking about the other day. So that's a repair on the West Ramp. We are just finishing up. We have new, through FAA funding, new taxiway signs and lighting at the airport, and that's coming through, and everything's looking great there. So the airport, when they U-land at night, it looks like a first-class airport with a good nomination. So, kind of brings everything up to where we are, but the biggest one is if this fence project comes through, you know, just to give you guys a heads-up that that may be a gunner. So, are there any questions you guys have about the airport, or any activities or things going on out there?
Any questions for Rich? Okay? Don't go away. We'll take public comment, then I want to ask you a couple questions. Any public comment on this item? We'll come right back up, Rich. I've got a couple questions for you. Just as he sits down. Should've asked him before, I'm sorry.
You got it.
So what I heard you say, just to make sure that I understand, is if you don't get the $90,000 next year, the funding goes away?
No.
From the FAA?
If they offer it to us...
Right.
And we don't accept it and have our match to go with it, then it does go away.
Okay.
But depending on their budget, if other large projects come up...
Right.
That take the discretionary money away, because this isn't money that we're promised. If that money is offered to us and we don't accept it, then it does go away.
Okay.
But if it's not offered to us, then it would roll over to the next year and next year until it is the top priority on their list.
Okay. Chuck, is this in our public works budget for next year?
We put it into the airport budget.
Okay. Okay, great. I think that's all I have. You guys have anything else? You guys do great? Yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick comment. You know, I just want to thank Rich and the entire board for the services that provide the city, and special thank you to Lloyd Hetrick, fixed base operator since about, what, 1984 or '85 now, Lloyd? It's been quite a while, but, you know, we, you know, our air services, we get great work from Lloyd and all the people that he has working there, and just does a great job. From the days of the old KU hangar out there to today, the development's been incredible. So it's done by a lot of work by our staff and Rich and the fixed base operators. So thank you all very much for the work you do.
Thank you.
Alright. Rich, thank you, and to all the great work that the advisory board does, and we're very grateful. So, thank you.
Mayor, you need a motion to receive the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd entertain a...no, I would...
You can entertain one, that's alright. You're pretty entertaining, mate.
That's right. I'd make a motion to receive the presentation from the Aviation Advisory Board.
Alright. Gosh, that hung out there for a little bit.
That was gonna die.
You were getting some whalers in your pocket, right? Motion to receive the report made by Commissioner Amick, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is to receive updates on the project revised, city's taxicab code, and on the state regulations for TNC services, and to consider adopting a First Reading Ordinance number 9092, amending section 6-108.17, repealing existing chapter 6, article 6, and enacting in its place chapter 6, article 6, of the City of Lawrence Code 2015 addition and amendments thereto pertaining to taxicabs, businesses, and taxicab vehicles. Hi, Brandon.
I think you got it.
I hope so. Don't make me repeat it.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is a project that was started back in February, so I don't want to make any assumptions on your familiarity with it. I'll go through a, hopefully, brief presentation, at least concise presentation. Feel free to stop me at any point and ask questions. We're dealing with two distinct issues here, although you'll probably hear from some of the stakeholders in the audience that they don't see it as such, but from a legal standpoint, the state law, they are distinct issues. The first is the taxi code, the city taxi code. And that's the project we've really been working quite a bit on, developing code revisions for over the last several months. The second is the TNC, that's Transportation Network Company Services Act of Kansas. That was the legislation that the state legislature and the governor have adopted this session just within the last couple weeks, and they finished the amendments for that. So I'll give you kind of an overview of that as well, because they do sort of fall under the same, at least in the same ballpark, under the same umbrella. So, overview of the taxi code. The City Clerk's Office of Ministers, taxi cab vehicle license. There are 32 total licenses, eight companies. Five of those companies have multiple taxi licenses. Three of them have just one. Those would be just an independent owner-operated type taxi cab. The code establishes just your standard business licensing processes, procedures, minimum insurance requirements, and licensing fees. So on February 17th, the city commission considered a new application for a taxi cab license. During that hearing, commissioners and members of the public expressed some concerns about the current taxi cab code, concerns about the procedural language. It is antiquated. You see some of the references in here. Some of the language dates clear back to 1947. And at that presentation, the last update to the commission, I actually brought the 1947 city code book to give an idea of just how old that is. The insurance requirements do meet the statutory limits for minimum liability requirements, but again, those were set, clear back in the late 1970s. The commissioners, at that point, expressed a number of concerns. I sort of categorized those concerns into three categories, three groups. The first was to address public safety, and the second was to address issues with insurance, minimum insurance requirements. And then the third was just to modernize the code to reflect current practices and the current situation in the market. We presented an update to the city commission, like I said, on March 10th. During that hearing, the commissioners directed staff to address a couple of other concerns that they had. They wanted us to include provisions that ensured equal access to taxicab vehicles for individuals with disabilities. And you'll see the references to the specific sections of the code here listed by each bullet point. So section 615 is where we address the equal access issues. The second concern was that they wanted to ensure that all taxi drivers undergo background checks. So we addressed that in 6606. And then the third concern was that they wanted the taxi license placards, which are the licenses displayed inside of the taxi cab for passengers to see, to include contact information from the city clerk's office. That would be the appropriate office to file a complaint or a concern if you're a taxi passenger and you feel like there's some cause for concern, or you want to report a violation of the city code. Since then, as I mentioned, the state of Kansas took up the issue of establishing regulations for TNCs. Those are companies like Uber and Lyft. You've, I'm sure, read about some of those activities in the news. As a result, we held off, because we heard from our taxi companies here locally that they wanted any requirements that they were subjected to through the taxi code to apply to TNC drivers as well. The state actually roughly stated, said that we can't do that. They preempted us from applying taxi cab regulations to those types of services, to those companies and those drivers. So we included an exemption for those specific companies and drivers in the revised code that's before you this evening. At the March 10th meeting, the city commission also requested information on a couple other issues. There were some questions and some considerations about possibly establishing provisions that taxicab companies must own and operate a minimum number of taxi vehicles, that they must provide a minimum level of service, that they must occupy a facility on a commercially zoned premise, and that they must occupy a facility within the city limits of Lawrence. I can speak specifically about those if you have any questions. Otherwise, there's some detailed information in the staff report, and I'll spare you the lengthy explanation at this point. Again, we can go through the step-by-step comparison of the code, or row-by-row comparison of the code, if you'd like. I'll continue with the presentation, and then maybe we can come back to that if you do have additional questions about that. And then that code comparison table is also included in the agenda. So that's just the overview of the taxi regulations, the revisions to that code that we've been working on. To give you an idea of what the state of Kansas has done regarding TNCs, again, those are companies like Uber and Lyft. The Kansas Transportation Network Company Services Act, TNCs, it creates the regulations for those companies and for those drivers. The Act was adopted on May 5th. The legislature continued negotiations after it was formally adopted, and they ended up amending those regulations later, later last month. The Act defines what TNCs are, and for all intents and purposes, TNCs are just a peer-to-peer digital network. It connects drivers to passengers, and it enables them to exchange rides for payment. TNC drivers are not TNC employees, they're just a user of the app or a partner. As I said, the TNC Act preempts the application of taxi and other four higher transportation regulations to that type of service. I just wanted to point out, the state does not regulate the taxi industry that's handled locally in Kansas. So what does the TNC Act accomplish? Some of the primary issues, there are really three primary issues that we heard feedback from our local taxi companies were important to them. One was background checks. So does the TNC Act establish background checks? The original Act did, but as it stands now, background checks are not required for TNC drivers. There is a list of convictions that would disqualify potential drivers from becoming TNC drivers, but the responsibility is on the TNC, so it'd be on Uber or Lyft or those types of companies, to make sure that individuals that have a record of those convictions do not become TNC drivers on their networks. The second issue was permitting. The TNC Act does not actually establish permits for TNCs or TNC drivers. We've seen some examples, like Kansas City, Missouri, which has a $45,000 licensing fee for transportation network companies. So if Uber wants to operate in Kansas City, Missouri, it has to pay the city of Missouri a $45,000 fee. That was all...there were several different types of licenses and fees and permits that that city bounced around in their negotiations over the past year with Uber, and that's how they landed. The state of Kansas, at this point, my understanding is that they don't actually have a license or a permitting fee for those companies or those drivers. And then the third issue was insurance coverages, and this is really one of the big issues, especially because the motivation for us working on the taxi cab ordinance was public safety and insurance. That was one of the big motivations of the city commission. So TNC drivers, as it stands now with the Kansas TNC Act, it defines service, TNC service, in essentially three different periods, three different phases. Those are displayed here. The first is when the driver turns the app on. They have not accepted a ride at this point. The second period is when they accept the ride and they drive to pick up the passenger. And then the third period is when the passenger gets in the car and they take them to their destination and accept payment. So that's where a lot of the negotiation was at the state level, was determining the appropriate coverages for each of those periods. And this is where they landed. My understanding is they have established for period one, where the driver is not engaged in providing a ride, they're just advertising that they're available to do so. They've established a 50-125 policy. And that's $50,000 for death or injury to a person, $100,000 for death or injury per incident, so multiple people, and then $25,000 for property damage. And that's approximately twice the statutory minimum liability auto insurance requirement. For periods two and three, the Act establishes a $1 million per occurrence coverage, and that's for death, injury, and property damage. So $1 million for both periods two and three. So that's the insurance coverages for Uber drivers and those types of drivers, as mandated by the state at this point. So again, I can go through the row-by-row comparison of the old taxi code to the new taxi code, if that would be helpful. I wanted to give you guys that option to direct me to do so. I want to make the best use of your time. And if not, then our recommendation as it stands is to adopt the ordinance. We've received good... We've received good, I think, good feedback from our stakeholders, from the taxi operators here in town, as well as Bob and Rob, who have given us some good advice on provisions for ensuring the accessibility of taxicabs. So if you do find it appropriate, then I would recommend adopting ordinance number 9092, which would put in place the revised taxi code provisions. And then just simply receive the update on the Kansas TNC Act. And if you do have any other questions or directions for us, then we can follow up on those.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea of the cost differential between, under the old program, I'm looking at the comparison of current taxicab code to proposed taxicab code, line nine, versus what are the minimum insurance requirements for taxicab vehicles? Under the old system, or I guess our current system, $25,000 for any injury to or death of any one person. We're modifying that to $300,000 per occurrence. Any idea of what we're looking at there in terms of cost to the taxicab company, the difference there?
The difference in the premiums?
Yeah.
A thousand a year.
Per vehicle, a thousand a year?
Brian, did you have any? Yeah. We had conversations about that, and I should have jotted some notes down. It would, so taxi livery type insurance is going to be inherently more expensive because that's a commercial transportation service. So it's going to be more expensive when you compare it to your personal auto. So a $300,000 policy is going to be, is going to be more than you would pay for your personal auto insurance. So I think that's...
It's going to be about $500 a month. No one will forget about that.
And that was one question we had extensive conversation on when we had our stakeholder meeting previously, was just identifying. We had originally started at $1 million, similar to the TNC bill that the state passed. And we, you know, obviously, that was too high, and that's what we heard from the companies here locally. Came down to $500,000 and then eventually landed on the $300,000 limit.
Okay.
And that is a, again, that's a combined limit. So that would apply to property if it was just, you know, just property damage, as opposed to a divided limit or a divided coverage.
Other questions for Brandon?
Is there any regulation the city can do of TNCs, or has the state taken it all?
I'll defer to Randy on this question, but really, the state has a fairly thorough policy in place, but I'll let Randy talk a little more about that.
Just a quick question. They have preempted us from doing anything within the taxicab code. There is a possibility that we could do it somewhere else in another regulation, possibly. If we look at a little bit more detail, they have preempted some regulation of it, but they haven't preempted all regulation.
Who's responsible for enforcing the insurance provisions of that?
That would be the state for the TNCs.
So there's no opportunity for us to do anything?
We wouldn't have any authority at this point in time to do that. That'd be for the state to do it.
Thank you, Randy. Any other questions for Brandon?
Is this the time to talk about the proposed permits?
Sure, we can, or we can finish up with questions, take some public comment, and then talk about it, whatever you guys want to do is great with me.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm looking at 6607A, 4, 5, and C.
Say that again, please.
6607A, 4, 5, and C. I can understand the rationale for 4. I'd like to understand, you know, what the rationale for 5 is, given that if somebody takes care of an outstanding arrest warrant, they can't, then can't apply for an application
What happens if an applicant has an outstanding arrest warrant in this jurisdiction or any other jurisdiction? They make the application, that'll come back to the police department. Police department will say they have an outstanding, then they'd have to take care of it or not, but we would deny, under the code, they're not, they don't receive the license. And then whatever happens after that, happens after that.
But if they're innocent, then we penalized them for having an arrest warrant, right?
That's not, I mean, we have several other provisions. There are several other code provisions that have that language.
Can you explain the rationale for doing it that way?
Yeah. Yeah, I would just say, so this is, again, take the attorney's word for it, but this is the, this is for an outstanding arrest warrant.
Right.
So I think that this is fairly transparent, in that if you're an applicant and you're familiar with the code, which we, you know, provide that at the time of application, we always provide that at the city clerk's office. If you're familiar with the code, then, you know, if I'm looking at this, then I would try to get my affairs in order before I apply.
Okay.
I think that it's important to have some type of level playing field for everybody inside a rule that you can hold folks accountable to.
And there are a number of other licenses that you can obtain from the city with an outstanding arrest warrant, whether it be a solicitor's license or alcoholic beverage license. But there's several other provisions within the city code that has that requirement.
Just trying to get people to deal with their outstanding arrest warrants before they go through this process.
Before they go through the process, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then you said you had a question on C as well?
Well, I mean, it's the interaction of C with A5.
And I'll say, especially compared to the, so we wanted to address public safety with this section, obviously. And compared to some other codes and ordinances, and then some of the TNC regulations with the state, these are, I'd say these are a little bit more lenient. I think they're still, they're still...
Do the TNC regulations have that outstanding arrest warrant?
Yeah, they have an extensive list. And it goes back further, I think, than ours. Ours is, I believe, five years.
Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, I think that there is, it's important to strike the balance between public safety and permanently restricting somebody from getting a second chance.
You good? All right. Any other questions for Brandon or Ray?
All right, good thoughts. All right, public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Rob Tabor. I'm president of the Jayhawk Chapter of the National Federation of the Blind Kansas Chapter. My colleague Bob McKesick is also here and may wish to speak on the matter. Bob is the executive co-director of Independence Incorporated. Bob and I appeared for the first time on ordinance, on this ordinance 9092, back on March the 10th. And when I learned that the ordinance was coming up for a major overhaul, I felt it appropriate to address issues of accessibility and nondiscrimination with respect to customers who seek and receive taxicab services with disabilities, when you're dealing with things like adaptive equipment, wheelchairs, canes, walkers, that kind of thing, and also service animals, which, as near as I can tell, has not been a large issue here in Lawrence, but it has been an issue in other places. So we thought it was appropriate to add some accessibility and some nondiscriminatory language into the ordinance. And we want to give our thanks and appreciation to Brandon for his work in coming up with the language that you see there in Section 615. And my organization goes on record as supporting the adoption of the ordinance now that the nondiscrimination language in 615 has been added. One other thing I do want to say is to emphasize the importance of training in regard to this matter. One can have the best intentions, and yet one can make a very innocent slip-up that can nonetheless result in a mishandling of a customer with a disability. So we believe, you know, we believe an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So I have been working on a PowerPoint presentation that follows the pocket guide that will be distributed to taxicab licensees. And within a matter of a few weeks, we will be standing ready to offer training to taxicab operators in the form of what I hope to be a very well-done and meaningful PowerPoint slide presentation to, not only to assure compliance with the letter of the new ordinance, but with the compliance with the sphere of the new ordinances as well. Appreciate your time and would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Any questions? I'm glad you guys showed up at the last meeting to get this in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Other public comment?
Hello, I'm Bob McKesick. I also just wanted to thank Brandon for his work and the commission, the City Commission's support of the ordinance changes. And Independence, Inc. has been providing transportation throughout Douglas County since 1986, so we also have a lot of experience providing transportation for people with a wide variety of disabilities to be glad to be part of the training that Rob developed and to complement that.
Excellent. Thank you, Bob. Other public comment? All right, back to the commission.
Mayor, this ordinance has been quite a while in the process, and Brandon, thank you for all the work that you've done and other members of the staff. I think that it reflects a number of the obvious changes that was brought forth by stakeholders and commission members, both current and past. So I appreciate all the work that's been done. I want to say one thing, it's been such a while. We need to get this approved now, just so everybody can know what the rules are and what the playing field is. So I appreciate all the work, and I'm ready to support it.
Okay, other thoughts?
I think it'll be interesting to see how the role of independent operators through such things as Uber and Lyft ends up, obviously, right now with the way that the state law is written, you know, we don't really, we don't really play a role in that. But it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. It's such a new model that it's going to certainly have an impact on the marketplace, and, you know, at some point, the discussion's going to have to be had about how ultimately that's different than, you know, how me taking a ride with somebody through Uber is different than me taking a ride through Lawrence Taxi Company. So that'll be a discussion that I think is going to surface at some point, depending on how the state plays out. But as it is the way it is, I think we're left with really no choice but to adopt it as it's written.
Okay, other thoughts? Go for it. So, perfect. Let me ask one question. Randy, would it be, if you have to come up, so would it be helpful if we just had you guys see what city regulations we could do and what state statutes permit us to do and not permit us to do? Would that be good direction on the TNC issue?
Yeah.
With that direction, we can look into it a little bit deeper and determine what regulations would be allowed in the law and what may be a course action.
Okay, is that...
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Good? All right. Sorry, go ahead.
Ready?
Go for it.
I had a move that we'd adopt on first reading ordinance number 9092, amending Section 6-108.17, or appealing existing Chapter 6, Article 6.
Second.
So forth.
Motion made to adopt on first reading ordinance number 9092, which does all the things that Commissioner Amick said it would do, that Stewart seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Brandon, thanks for all your hard work, and thank you all so much for coming tonight and being a part of this process. Third item on our agenda tonight is to consider authorizing the final retainer payment of $50,000 to Jean Fritzl Construction for the Spork Pavilion Lawrence Project.
Good evening.
Hi.
So this item has to do with the Spork Pavilion Lawrence Project, and as you know, the city had a contract for the construction. There was a $50,000 in the payments that was retained in order for us to follow up on various punch list items. So it's very routine, of course, when you have a construction project of that magnitude, to have a variety of punch list items that need to be followed up on after the facility is opened up to the public and given over to the owner. So that had occurred last September of 2014. Since then, we have worked with the contractor through a variety of the punch list items, and the contractor has been very diligent in responding to those items. And now we have depleted the punch list. There is no remaining items. There are a small number of warranty items, which are really different than the punch list items. The facility remains under warranty through September the 1st. And so with the completion of the punch list, staff strongly recommends the authorization of this final payment to the contractor. So we see no reason that it needs to continue to be held, and again, we strongly recommend paying that amount, and then we would continue to work with following up on any of the warranty items that continue to need that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Ernie and Mark are here as well that can comment on any level of detail.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Any questions for Diane from the commission?
Question, Ernie or Mark?
Okay.
In light of the recent monsoon we faced here in Lawrence, has there been any indication whether or not Rock Chalk Park is a watertight building at this point?
It actually is. That was one of the punch list items we've actually been holding on, and we wanted to have them make all the improvements and then let it sit for a month or two to make sure we were waterproof. Yeah, the last two months, we've had zero leaks. We had one drip over the weight room, but the roof itself is actually warranted for 20 years, so we're not really worried about that, the little tiny one drip, because that's a matter of adjusting flashing on top. But besides that, we're fine. We haven't had any leaks over wood. The only leaks we had early on were all over concrete, so we feel pretty fortunate that that's the leaks we were having have all been corrected, so.
Thank you. Okay, other questions for Mark, Ernie, Diane?
I have a question about the warranty, just because I'm new, and I don't know if this goes to Diane or you. But, so the punch list is done, and then the warranty is up just within a couple of months. It seems really short, not only, you know, that time period itself, but just we only have, to begin with, one year warranty on the building. Is that normal?
Yeah, I mean, basically, once we take the possession of the building, everything that's not associated with initial construction becomes a warranty item. So if we can track it back to initial construction and said, hey, that wasn't done right initially, that's on the punch list. If it's something that broke, or we felt like, hey, you know, that really didn't work the way it was supposed to work, that's a warranty item. So these things where the roof was all perfect, and then all of a sudden we start having some drips, that's a warranty item, as opposed to a punch list item. Some of the things were punch list, some were warranty. There's continuing things like the weight room floor we had an issue with. We got in there, we lived there three or four months. We really weren't happy with the way the floor was performing. We called them and said, hey, this really needs to get corrected. Contractor came in under warranty, replaced the whole floor. So that wasn't really a punch list item, but a warranty item. So I feel pretty good. We have some door issues we want to resolve here in the next couple of months. It's just hardware and adjustments, so we'll push that on warranty. But, you know, they installed what was supposed to be installed. So contractually, they've done what they're supposed to do, but it becomes more of an adjustment and tweak and make sure it's right.
So is a one-year warranty normal for new buildings?
Pretty standard, yeah. Yeah, on most major construction, from the time you get it to the time, they'll say, hey, we'll warranty that for a year. Usually, you'll have a chance to go through all the seasons and say, you know, the air conditioner's worked, the heater's worked, the humidity worked well in the building. the air conditioners work, the heaters work, the humidity worked well in the building. So that kind of stuff is a lot of the things you're looking for. Worked well under snow load, rain load, so.
Any other questions for Mark? All right. Mark, thank you.
You bet.
Public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Katie Walsh. This may be off-topic, which I'm good at, but I just had a question because I read the article in the paper about future costs for Parks and Rec. And, you know, they're working under a super tight budget. One of the costs was a glare out at Rock Chalk from one of the courts. And they were going to have to buy a $20,000 window shade to cut the glare. And I'm not an architect or an engineer, and I know things have to be fireproof and designed to last 20 years. But I talked to a couple of friends who are interior designers professionally, and they wondered, without seeing it, if the glass couldn't be etched or frosted, or there's very inexpensive methods to cut glare on glass. And so I'm just bringing that up because maybe it would be a cheaper solution. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Mark, can you address that for us, please?
I can. The issue is kind of interesting because it's seasonal. So all through the fall and winter, we didn't really have a sun issue because the sun was actually further south in the sky. As we end the summer, it moves further north. So we're starting to get some sun in those north windows just for about two hours in the evenings from about 5:30 to 7:30. And it's between, basically, until it gets behind the trees. And it's only June, July. So we are going to have to probably do something with motorized shades or something on those windows eventually. And I kind of equate this to moving into a new house. And as you live there for a while, you start to realize that, oh, I need curtains there. I need shades here. So I think we'll have to address that. If you go out there to, you know, we have the Bill South basketball camp going on. You watch the kids play basketball, and if they're going the wrong angle, they're going right into the sun. So I think that's something we'll want to address for our summer activities. It's really a non-issue through the fall and through the winter. So but, yeah, the motorized shades, you know, they're expensive. But in the grand scheme of things, I really think it'd be a great investment. We want the windows open all the times we can have them. We just want to be able to close it down when that sun's shining in there.
There were a couple of other things on your list that had to do with Sports Pavilion. And can you kind of talk about them a little bit, too? My conversation with Diane was that they were not included in the original contract.
Right, yeah. You know, and again, it's kind of back to moving into a new house and finding things that you wish we would have done originally. But, you know, we probably want to look at divider curtains on the soccer fields because we're running three activities at one time. And we thought, well, we could just put up a little divider fence. But we're finding balls are kicked back and forth between the fields. So eventually, we want to do drop curtains in there. The shades on the back windows were another thing. It's just, you know, I think things are within budget range. There's no big items, but it's just, you know, we always want more furniture here or we want different things here. So I think, again, none of these are real time-sensitive things. But as we live there for a while, I think we'll want to continue to improve the facility to make it as good as it can be.
And Commissioner Bowley, as we had discussed, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that those were not items that were included in the original contract.
Right.
Those are just things we've figured out since we've had it open.
Sure. There have been a lot of little things like that. We want a net here. We want, you know, the balls are going out of the soccer field into the gymnastics area. We want to put a net up there. So things we learn as we live there.
Other questions?
Mark, in the soccer area, the netting that's up there, is that the protection for the lights?
Yeah, that was the net on also. We didn't think the balls were going to get up to that level. But we quickly found that balls were getting up, hitting the lights and hitting the sprinkler heads. In fact, we broke one sprinkler head just the first month of operation. So the netting, we went ahead and raised those lights up and put netting up there to keep those balls from going up. We've also closed off a couple of the end cavities that went to gymnastics and to gym eight. We've had one ball go up on the mezzanine, so we're kind of monitoring that one to see if we need to net more of that. We really didn't think the balls were going to go as high as they're going right now, so. But people are having fun.
I bet. You just drive for them.
Yeah, well, I kind of wonder sometimes if that's not the goal, hit them through the hole in the wall.
Probably not kids. It's probably adults.
Possibly.
Matt, stay out of there. All right. Mark, thank you.
You bet.
Well, what's before us is to authorize the final retainer payment of $50,000 to Jean Fritzl Construction for the Sports Pavilion Lawrence project. And I'd entertain a motion either way.
You get to talk about it first?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I want to say that before we vote on this, I want to thank Commissioner Amick for his principled and determined opposition to the process that brought us Rock Chalk Park. My vote's not to refute Mike's work on this issue, but instead, a recognition of the city's legal obligation to pay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that sentiment that I think there's a lot of people that are sitting up here, largely due to some of the things that happened in that process, and I count myself as one of them. And so, you know, I don't think our vote today has anything to do with how we feel that was as a priority for the community, but rather the reality that we, you know, we made a deal with the contractor and, you know, it's, we're going to hold up our end of the bargain.
Mayor, you and I have had a lot of debates about this, you know, over the last several years. The opportunity to have a lot of discussions about it. My vote's not going to change, I want you to know. But I appreciate, you know, Stewart, I appreciate your words. Matt, I know it's, it's a great facility, Diane. And I was there yesterday and, you know, kids everywhere, so. Not a bad deal, but process is process.
Thoughts? Okay. So you're not going to make the motion, I assume? This is the last one.
Do you want me to make a motion? No, thanks, Tony.
Okay. All right.
I move that we authorize final retainer payment.
There are second?
I'll second.
All right, motion made and seconded to approve the final retainer payment of $50,000 to Jean Fritzl Construction for the Sports Pavilion Lawrence project, made by Commissioner Bowley, seconded by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three-two with Commissioners Amick and Vice Mayor Soden in dissent. The fourth item on the agenda last is to consider a motion to recess an executive session for 15 minutes for the purpose of discussing possible property acquisition. Justification for the executive session is to keep possible terms and conditions of the property acquisition confidential at this time. And I would entertain that motion.
Go move.
Motion made seconded to recess into executive session for 15 minutes, made by Vice Mayor Soden, seconded by Commissioner Amick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. We'll see you in 15 minutes.